It is 6:30 PM. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 20th Planning Commission Meeting. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will. Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Here.
Mr. Marley?
Here.
Ms. Smith has an excused absence. Mr. Spatafora?
Here.
Mr. Oliver has an excused absence. And Rich Bentley, I am here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Mr. Chairman, I move to exclude Commissioners Oliver and Smith from all roll call votes this evening.
And moved by Mr. Spatafora to exclude Mr. Oliver and Mrs. Smith from roll call votes, supported by Mr. Myerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. All right. Approval of previous meeting minutes. Any discussion?
If none, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the previous meeting minutes as presented.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spatafora to approve the minutes, supported by Mr. Myerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any discussions, corrections, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as read.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, old business. Mr. Box?
There is none this evening.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business and public hearings. Final site plan for Cortona Park. Permanent parcel 0805-100040, located on the south side of 26 Mile Road, 380 feet east of Romeo Plank, Section 05, Stonecraft Investments LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. As you mentioned, the site is located near the intersection of Romeo Plank and 26 Mile, near the southeast corner. The plan is seeking approval for a 12-unit, single-family residential development. This plan did come before you in the preliminary state and was approved. They have now gone through engineering and they are back for their final plan. They do have their eight-foot walk on 26 Mile. They're providing access from two locations, 26 Mile and the neighboring development. And all lots meet the minimum requirement in terms of area width and depth. They do have the necessary green space at the front of the complex or the landscape area near 26 Mile, as well as signage. At this time, all the zoning items are met and the final plan approval is being recommended by staff.
Okay. Petitioner, good evening. Please state your name and address for us, please, sir.
My name is Bill Thompson from Seberge Slener. The address is 17001 19 Mile Road, Suite 3, Clinton Township. I'm here on behalf of Mr. DiMecurio. I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have on the project.
Okay. Commissioners? Questions, comments? Mr. Bentley?
If I may?
You may.
Just one for, I guess for record, although Mr. Box has clarified it for me. The agenda indicates this is parcel number 0805-100040. The plans that I see do not have that 040. It's 021, which from Mr. Box, indication that that was the parent property and it was split between 39 and 40. So I'm not sure. I guess we are talking about parcel 40, but that's not what's indicated on the drawings. It indicates parcel 21. So I just wanted to clarify that for record. Is there any clarification you would add to that? Bill?
No, other than the fact that the original parcel was split, the house remains and the balance of the property is developed. And I'm not sure which is 39 and which is 40, but yes, it is one of the two.
Okay. Yeah, from what I understand, the home is on 39?
That's correct, and the development is 40.
Is 40.
Okay.
And that's why the agenda here is indicating 40, and that's what we're going to be looking at. My other comment, since it's primarily just comments you're looking for, is the signage at the entrance drive, Cortona Drive. The signage, the way it's set back with the landscaping and maybe its angle, would only be read from, you know, someone going to the west or going east. Wouldn't be seen by anyone going west. And so I guess my thought is, I don't know if there's anything you can do about that, but it seems hidden and I wouldn't see it, I guess unless I was going very, very slow and took my eyes off the road. So as a safety matter, I guess I would consider a relocation of that or maybe a different design. I don't know. Other than that, those are all my comments.
Okay. Anyone else? No one? All right. At this time, I'd need a motion to open it to the public then.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora?
No support.
Supported by Mr. Myerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. So if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak about the final site plan for Cortona Park, you may do so now. You have four minutes. And we take all your comments, concerns, and questions, and we save them till the very end, and then we address everything at once. So is there anyone that would like to come up and speak? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I guess we need a motion to close the public portion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Myerly?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion to close at 3:00 or 6:38. Now, do we have a motion on this item? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of final site plan for Cortona Park 0805-100. What was the last three? Is this the correct? 040. Pursuant to the application meeting our standards and recommendations from the applicable department heads.
Okay. I'll second that. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Myerly?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley? Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are unanimous then.
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Moving on to the next item, the PUD concept plan for McBride Crossing. Permanent parcel 0816-200012, located on the southwest corner of 24 Mile Road and the future Broughton Road, Section 16, Stonecrest of Washington LLC petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So this is the concept review, as you said. This is really your chance to provide some feedback for the concept that they're putting forward this evening. There's nothing to vote on or make a motion on this evening. This is strictly for your input as they move forward. As you see on the screen behind you, step two is kind of where we get into the much more detailed site plan and have the PUD agreement. So that being said, the concept is a three-phase development that would have both multifamily and single-family, as well as a gas station with a potential drive-through use as well. You did mention that the future Broughton Road would go through here, so that's identified in their plan. That is a large piece of right-of-way that they'd be giving up in order to fit Broughton Road through. That's not typical for most of our developments. Typically, mile roads would be down the border of two different parcels, so you're only giving up half of that right-of-way as you develop your piece. So this is a bit of a unique situation, which is why I think they've chosen to go the PUD route to seek a little bit more density to make up for the right-of-way that they're losing for a future Broughton Road, which, as we all know, connecting Broughton Road through is important for the township as well. That being said, so single-family, they are required to be 70 feet wide. They do have a few that are less. That's something that you guys can comment on, your thoughts of how you would view that in the future. They do meet the 15% requirement for open space. They actually have 20%, as well as a fair amount of screening in green belts. And the six-foot masonry wall could be provided for the commercial component as well. Again, these are things that you can comment on this evening, and they'll be back with the general design plan and hopefully meet your comments. Additionally, having a drive-through, you know, the call box is supposed to be 300 feet away. They would likely either seek a variance or get that as part of the PUD agreement, but you guys would be looking at buffering in terms of landscaping. So I think that's some of the comments that they would like to hear this evening, what you'd be looking for as far as buffering would go, should there be a call box at that location. And the same thing goes with the parking, what you'd be looking for for the multifamily. So again, you're tasked this evening with providing comments and suggestions, and there's no formal action required.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. Petitioner, please state your name and address for us, please.
Good evening, John Delislo. I'm with Noah and Fraus Civil Engineers for the applicant 48680 Van Dyke Shelby Township. And we're excited about this development and the opportunity that kind of extends from Mr. Magnoli, the applicant's development at 25 and Broughton. We're bringing that same architecture down to this location, which also has great connectivity to the town center. And it was, and those multifamily buildings, as I recall, were highly praised by the community in some of the initial feedback that we had gotten. So we're extending that down and then adding, you know, the 92 single-family units, which is what the site will allow, you know, once we take out the easement for the drain and the 120-foot wide right-of-way for the extension of the Broughton Road. So we do welcome all your feedback. We'd like to hear, in particular, the highlights that Mr. Box had pointed out. And I can go through a few of those with you if you'd like me to do that initially.
Okay. Commissioners? Mr. Bentley?
I just have a few.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I guess to start out with on the drawings, and I know this is not, this is still concept. Just a discrepancy, the ETP easement, is that 50 or 60?
I believe it's 50. In our conversations, they were discussing potential for 60. So we were anticipating, you know, maybe a worst case there.
Okay.
But we'd be excited if it was 50 and...
Sure.
...be able to kind of keep it contained, give more space to the units.
Okay. And I guess this is a question for Mr. Tiflin. Can there be equalizers between detention ponds or retention ponds?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, yeah. In this case, it crosses the gas transmission line, so there would have to be some agreement with them regarding that. But this is, from an engineering standpoint, not a concern.
Okay, yeah. So an easement might have to be made through their prop, through their easement, or...
Yeah, well, it's their property, but typically whoever owns that easement has some rights, and they may have to approve whatever the design is that they come up with for that pipe to cross there. The location, the depth, all of those things are a consideration for the, you know, transmission line.
Okay. All right, thank you. The, there's a number of places where the retention basins, detention basins are identified as park and open detention basin. Are you really having a park area where those detention basins are?
Yes, we are. We're proposing a pathway, and these have permanent water in them. They're not going to be an empty, you know, mud bottom when it's not a rain event. It's going to be a permanent pool, so it will appear to be a pond.
Okay.
That does, you know, that is a feature of a park, you know, an ideal park, and we're placing the pathways there and some landscape touches to make it a nice space.
And the slopes of those will not be too great to where it would require a fence around those areas?
No. No, we would do whatever we could to eliminate any need for a fence and keep it at a manageable, you know, one-on-six, one-on-five slope that we can maintain.
All right. Okay, I guess that... I guess that would answer that. I have, in looking at the plans for the units, and I know this is early on, but I would take a look at some of the larger plans that we were given, and they don't match the elevations. The first floor doesn't match the second floor as far as where the stairs are located. So some of that stuff should be cleaned up, I would think, when you submit further on. And in particular, the fifth unit from the right, just, it should be flipped. Regarding the call box, it looks like maybe with a redesign of the commercial site, the lineup of the, or the stacking of the cars and such, that it's quite feasible, I would think, to relocate it so that it is, in fact, 300 feet from that residential area to the west as well as to the south, the proposed area. And would, I guess, recommend you consider revising that layout so that it would be at least 300 feet away and would not require any kind of variance then.
And under that proposal, are you proposing that that building and the gas pumps be flipped so that the building is closer to 24 Mile?
I think there's a number of different ways that you could propose. Maybe it is a, it's not a complete flip, but maybe partially rotated and to get, just to get the call, call box located in a, you know, in a far enough distance that it wouldn't require any kind of variance and objection to the residents that surround this site. So I think with a little due diligence, I think you can manage that. There is a number of sites. I noticed that there was three or four identified as being less than 70 feet by 120. I noticed there was quite a few that are less than that, at least on our plan. And maybe that, maybe the plan that we have isn't the latest that has been developed, but there's quite a few that have less than, they're more like 60 feet or...
That's correct. We, what we did under this design was try to retain the larger lots along the existing Harmony Acres larger lots, so that we're consistent and then we're stepping down towards a higher density as we move towards the future Broughton Road. So we've got the single-family, same lot size, 70 foot plus. I think we've got three that are 68. But then we stepped to 60s and then we stepped to the multifamily product. So that was the intent here, and I think the request that we make, that we increase the size of some of these lots were the three 68 footers, which, you know, to mitigate that, we'd have to eliminate a lot. Now we've got 202-foot lots. So we're willing to work with, you know, planning on that and see what might be agreeable, and the same with the call box location, because, you know, our commercial setup is in the traditional layout right now. But if there's something else that they think that works, we're open to it.
Right. Yeah, and I guess I'm one for traditional if it works for the site-specific.
Yeah.
And I don't want to use a cookie cutter layout for every location, but if we can resolve the issue, that'd be great. And yeah, that'd be great if you can minimize the number of 60-foot widths on property. The only other thing I had is looking at the pedestrian ways through the site, through to the parks and across, through the different various densities. It seems like there could be some improvement there on the pedestrian ways, because there's a lot of areas that they just have to travel a long ways across the parking lot to get to other residences or to the other side of that development. Whereas maybe just switching the locations might take them a lot safer route. So you might think about the pedestrian ways. And that's one of the things we are to look at, is any potentially dangerous issues related to the cross connections of vehicles and pedestrians, so. And that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
Go ahead. You have something?
I would just, some comments, Mr. Delislo. I like the concept of single-family, multifamily, commercial, the parks. Are all the open space ponds, will they all retain water wet? Or will there any be just detained, passed through and be dry in case of, you know, overflow or storm or anything like that? As best as you know at this point?
Yeah, our design is in the detention basin areas to have a permanent pool of water.
Okay, for all the ponds that you show on the plan that we see?
Yes.
Okay.
Four bays that are a part of that pond, which, you know, behave a little differently. But yeah, so it'd be permanent pool, about a four-foot depth on each of those.
Okay. Will any of those ponds be available for the residents for recreational use in the water? Or are they pretty much for engineering purposes, all or some of them?
Yeah, it would be for engineering purposes. We do have some aerators proposed to, you know, present a little fountain. But as far as recreational use, I would defer to the township if they permit that. But I know the associations associated with us would not want to have that.
Will any of the parks or open space have any active recreation for those residents? Playscapes, swings, I don't know, besides the walking trails or...
Yeah.
...type of nature, type of friendly amenities within them?
Yeah, so right now, we just, we had limited those and opened the discussion to, you know, present some areas to stop and rest and recreate. Although, you know, adding some landscape features that have some interest points. So right now, I think the best opportunity to add anything or to supplement that if the township's interested would probably be along that pathway by the drain and the ponds on the east side of Broughton Road.
Okay. That's all I have. I know you'll ferret a lot of this stuff out with the next steps in this PUD process, but for this piece of land and this parcel, I like your concept.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I guess the first couple of questions I'd have would be for Josh. So typically with PUDs, we give something, we get something, basically what a PUD is. Obviously, in this particular case, we're giving higher density. This is master plan at three per acre. Conservatively, this is four per acre. If you only look at the buildable areas, maybe it's five per acre. If I don't take into account Broughton for a second, I don't really see much that we're getting for this. So I assume that the principal benefit here for the township is Broughton. Is that basically accurate?
Yes.
Getting the pass-through for it?
Yeah, we have, there were a couple other interested parties in this property that came before. And I think the single-family approach makes it largely unbuildable when you have to give up that much right-of-way. So Broughton being of utmost importance for connectivity through the township, I think, yes, you're right. That is the big gain for the township, that we're getting Broughton Half Mile constructed for us.
And just so I am clear, when you say constructed, you mean, and not that it's insignificant, but you were referring to the right-of-way. Does the property owner pay toward the road at all?
The, I'll let you go.
Those are decisions that will be made at a later date when we go to the next step in the PUD process. So what portions of the work on the east side of the drain, the road itself, all those things will be part of, I'm assuming, part of the agreement that we have.
Part of an agreement, whether it was there or whether it was not.
Yes.
Okay. And it was not something I was familiar with, so. That said, I guess the only question I would have for you, and I'll probably echo it to the applicant. In this particular case, we're then granting them density greater than the whole parcel would have had even without the right-of-way, which maybe if there's other, you know, benefits that they give us, I can understand that. But I guess what was the thinking on the township's end as far as giving a greater density? Just because it's greater density doesn't mean it's more valuable? Or what, can, I'm just curious what the thought was on that benefit?
Yeah, so I think it, not only is it, you know, getting Broughton Road, but there are some parks along, or recreation spaces along the drain, but also you have a development that's looking to kind of maintain that gateway into the town center area.
Town center area.
Some of the buildings have the same facade and same look and feel, so it matches what we're anticipating the town center to look like.
Okay. And just following that up and for the applicant, and sorry, I know this is supposed to be with you as well, but my concern, looking at it in a vacuum, is we master plan at three per acre. Probably the number one concern we hear here, and I'm sure staff does, is traffic. We are increasing the density of traffic. However, on the flip side, if I give an opinion on it, if this allows us to have a better trunk line through the township, the added traffic has an obvious balancing out. So if I had a preference, I don't think I would increase the density on the parcel, but certainly I can understand that there is value to that, and I'm not necessarily against it. Just my preference would be to maintain the three per acre that we had at master plan as. So there's that. Echoing a couple of Mr. Bentley's comments, I did see less than 70-foot lots in a number of places. I'm the Planning Commissioner's representative, the ZBA, so I see a lot of the variance requests that come in. And irregularly sized lots, frankly, we already have a lot of our builds pretty tight on a lot as it is. And so we bump into the buildable areas very, very quickly, particularly as residents have already bought the parcel or bought the property with a house on it, and then they look to improve it, be it a pool or a shed or whatever else. And so I guess my concern with that would just be on a single-family residence. We already see a lot of people bumping hard up against those sides. So again, I'm not sure that I would be directly opposed to it, but I see a lot of the examples where 70 feet is not big enough relative to what the typical resident in the township is looking for with regards to improvement. So I would have, I would have concern in that regard. I've gone over my four minutes.
No. You're fine. You're fine.
So that's just a comment on that. With regards to the call box, I would also say that I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I would... would also say that I'm not necessarily opposed to it. But I would think ideally, it would be oriented further away from the adjoining residence as possible. Right now, it's, obviously you have the, the basin there, so that's splitting between that and, and the residential to the, I guess that'd be to the west. But taking out of account the basin, that's the closest portion to the residential area. So if that could be redone to make that further away, maybe on the south side or something of that nature, I would think that, to me, that would be a, a better design relative to that. We've, we've spent a lot of time, particularly with call boxes, we've had some long heated arguments on multiple, multiple parcels, trying to maintain a far distance on a call box. And certainly, there are times when we have to vary from that. We have, we've given variances on it in a couple of places. But if possible, would like to keep that. I, I think it's good to keep that as far away as we can. So, just a comment in that regard. I think the parking, I think it was mentioned that if, if we went by ordinance, obviously we have the ability to have leeway with that with the PUD. If by ordinance, it's, it's low relative to the, to the house count. I would agree, even visually, it seems low. I'm not sure the best way to balance that out. Obviously, you have garages for these units. But the public parking, to me, seems on the low side. I don't know that I have a number. Obviously, it's below what our ordinance would call out by, what I would say is a relatively significant amount. I don't know if it's, I don't know what the right number is. But to me, it looks like, relative to the units, it's a small, small number of parking. So that'll be a comment. The last comment I would have would be with regards to the trails, and that would be that hopefully you can give us a little bit more detail on them. We had a recent PUD that came in. And the original detail had apparently been so minimal that the trails were woodchips or something along those lines. And they had, basically were, were so far past the ability to keep up that we had someone come back in and asked for us to amend the original agreement so that they could remove that, that requirement. So I would hope that, moving forward, you can make sure that it is noted in the, in the documents, what materials it's made of, and, and hopefully some type of, you know, durable material that will, will be there and, and will be facilitated for that improvement for quite a while. So those were the specific issues or thoughts that I had. But I will say, overall, I, I think it makes sense. I think it flows in with the town center. Obviously, we're trying to develop that. It is different than other places in the township, but the town center is a different area. Obviously, there's some difficulties. And I would say that I would find myself generally in support of it, obviously with some of the concerns I brought up. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Box, did I miss how close the call box is to the residence on the west?
Um, yeah.
See it here.
It's, it's just shy of, of three hundred feet by maybe twenty feet, like two eighty-ish. I don't know that I have the exact number, but...
Okay, so it's close?
It's, it's close.
Very close.
And I, and I would also point out that in a lot of the other instances, the houses already exist. When the call box attempts to go in, in this instance, people would be buying those lots knowing what's been approved next door.
Okay. And you're comfortable with, I guess shielding is maybe not the right word, but, you know, the call box for those extra twenty feet?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Mr. Bentley?
Two follow-up questions. One regarding the, the eight-foot sidewalk that would be put in on the west side of the future Broughton. Has that been decided as to whose responsibility that would be? Or is that still up in the air at this point?
That will be part of the discussion that we have on, for when the PUD design plan comes in.
For the west side too?
Yeah. We need, we need to work out a lot of details with the county with regard to the timing of all of this. They've, they've got to work out how, what phasing, you know, if the Broughton Road isn't there, how do they get access to the site and build units in there until Broughton Road goes in. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that need to come into, into place at the next step.
Right. Okay, thank you. And the only other thing was regarding the call box. The current layout, it was the first thing I looked at, but there's no room as far as for landscaping to create a buffer, a sound buffer, between that call box where it's at or the way it's laid out. So that might be another way to improve it. If you, if for some reason you can't get to three hundred feet away, but, or, yeah, three hundred feet away. We see, we see a lot of different ways that they do that, even when they have the distance, just to keep the sound, control the sound. So you've got, you've got cars right up against it and there's no way, especially in its direction. It would be because you see the, the menu and everything is facing the residences that are on the west. And so it makes it very difficult to shield as far as sound.
Yeah. We, well, the box will be located, you know, within the height of the car. So the car itself is a buffer. Beyond that, we've got a landscape area. Then we have a masonry wall. Then we've got a pond with an aerator fountain in it. And then we've got, you know, a sixty-foot right-of-way and then those, those homes. So, you know, our contention is, we do have that ability to, you know, put some landscaping in there, absorb that sound and, and deflect it from the residence to the west. That was our thinking.
Okay. Are we good? Everybody?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other question that I forgot to ask.
I don't see any landscaping. It's right on a sidewalk, right adjacent to the cars. There's no landscaping there around that.
And so you have the call box and you, you pull up next to the call box, so your car itself shields that sound from traveling to the west of you. And then to the right of the vehicle is a drive lane. And then there's a landscaped area right before we reach the six-foot masonry wall that we're putting in at the property line.
Oh, yeah. Quite a ways away.
Right.
Okay.
Between there and, and the homes.
I think it's depicted on sheet L1.
Yeah, I've, I've got it up here, but that's so far away, it sounds already gone. I mean, it's already dispersed, so.
Okay. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yeah, just one question with regards to how you would expect to phase in the event, I don't know what the timeline is on Broughton, but would we be expecting that the, the phase with the multifamily would, would be entering and exiting through the single family and through that, through Stella Drive for, for a significant period of time? Do we have any idea of, of how long that would be? Because obviously, Broughton's future, I don't know what the timeline of, of it is. But what are we expecting the phasing and that balance would be if you got into that, you got into that position?
Well, the site would require, you know, I think when we see twenty-eight units, two ways of ingress and egress. So there'd have to be two points of, of access for those units that we construct. So that would drive some of the phasing on this.
So even though you have currently, as it's built in, Tila, which would tie, I suppose, eventually into Stella, that, that would be considered one point of egress? So you would have, you would have to have Broughton there in order to, to develop the multifamily portion?
Or a secondary ingress-egress would have to be temporarily constructed.
Yeah, there, there's some stub streets into the neighboring residential development.
To the west, Harmony Acres.
That would all be part of Phase 1, which does connect to Phase 2, which would be the, the multifamily. So they could potentially do it and have the, the appropriate amount of access prior to Broughton Road going in. But again, that's something that will be hashed out later.
Okay. Obviously, the concern there being a substantial amount of traffic coming out on one drive onto, onto twenty-four.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I see residents in the audience, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to open it to the public.
So moved.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Bentley, seconded by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed at seven oh nine? So folks, if there's anybody in here that would like to speak about the concept plan for McBride Crossing, now's your time to come up to the podium. You have four minutes. And then again, like I said before, we address all the concerns at the very end. Anybody would like to speak? Anybody? Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and close the public portion at seven ten with a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bentley, supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right. At this time, there is no further action needed for this item, correct, Mr. Box?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on. To rezoning from residential one-family suburban R1S to flex-use permanent parcel zero eight, zero eight, one two six, zero one two, located on the southeast corner of Twenty-Five Mile Road in Romeo Plank, section zero eight, Comtownship petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So the next three agenda items are all rezonings, dealing with the R1S zoning category. So I'm gonna talk about really all three of them right now. Just so we're all on the same page, you, you remember six to eight months ago, we went through in several phases and got rid of all of the R1S zoning within the township. There were a few pieces that were left over that needed to be rezoned once we established the flex zoning, as well as a couple that didn't meet the R2L that we were initially attempting to rezone them to. So those are the items before you this evening. So to, to go over that again, what we're doing is looking at the, the current zoning categories that we have and getting rid of R1S. There's a conflict between what that would allow and, and what's on the master plan, both the current master plan and the previous two thousand and eight master plan. Specifically deals with density and, and how large the lots have to be and how much density you can get per acre. So we are moving forward with removing that from the zoning category. And again, we're down to, I believe, the seven parcels that we have before you this evening, and it will no longer be within the township after that, assuming that they are approved. So again, this, this is three different agenda items, but they're, they're all pertaining to the, the same thing, removing the R1S. So the first item is the Twenty-Five Mile and Romeo Plank that you mentioned. We are recommending that to be rezoned to flex at this time. That property is already under a consent agreement, so it's largely guided by that consent agreement anyways. Should that consent agreement go away for whatever reason, then it, it could potentially default back to the flex zoning. But regardless, the underlying zoning is currently R1S, so it needs to be something else. And the master plan does show that as the flex zoning. The, the next three that you see on the, the right, on the screen behind you are along Twenty-Three Mile. One is a much larger piece and then two smaller parcels. So those are also being recommended to be rezoned to flex use, which again, matches what was in the master plan that was adopted this past spring. Staff is recommending approval of these items. And then I'm gonna mention quickly the, the last item, item E on the agenda. So those are the three parcels along Romeo Plank. Initially, we were looking at those as R2L because of the development that is going in around them. However, they did not have enough road frontage. So we are recommending R1 at this time. Nothing, as we stated when we went through the previous phases, nothing will, will change for the homeowners. They can continue living as they currently live. It won't affect their taxes. And it's not going to prevent them from seeking a different designation in the zoning category in the future if they chose to do so. And again, staff is recommending approval of those as well.
Okay. So let's take these one at a time. The first one. Any questions on the first one? Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just make, make the brief comment that I think we saw this first one a year or so ago, maybe a year and a half ago. And I think we declined or we, we voted not to approve the proposed rezoning at that point to wait for flex. And flex is here. And I think this, while there's still, we have not applied this zoning in, in actuality yet, I think it does a better job of protecting adjoining residents and allowing this property to develop to the benefit of the township, the landowner and the adjacent parcel. So I'm glad we were able to get to it. I'm, I'm glad the landowner was able to be patient on it. And hopefully, it'll be a better change for this parcel.
And Mr. Box, we should open to the public each one of these separately, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So?
Each of the three agenda items, yes.
Right.
Not on this item, no.
Okay. Anyone? All right. Then I need a motion to open the rezoning for residential one-family suburban R1S to flex-use at Twenty-Five Mile and Romeo Plank. Open it to the public at seven fifteen.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. If anyone would like to come up and speak about this item, you're more than welcome to do that. Anyone? Okay. And then at seven sixteen, we'll go ahead and close the public portion.
So moved.
With a motion.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Do we have a motion to recommend?
There's no further discussion, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that we rezone from residential one-family suburban R1S to flex-use, FLX, that permanent parcel number zero eight, zero eight, dash, one twenty-six, dash, zero twelve, as recommended by our planner.
Okay. I'll support that. All right. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
And Mr. Bentley, yes.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Let's move on to the next item. Rezoning from residential one-family suburban R1S to flex-use, permanent parcel zero eight, one seven, four five one, zero one eight, and zero eight, one seven, four five one, zero two four, and zero eight, one seven, four five one, zero two five, located on the north side of Twenty-Three Mile Road, west of Romeo Plank, section seventeen, Comtownship petitioner. All right. Mr. Box has already given his spiel, so do we have discussion? Okay. Without any discussion, since we have residents in the audience, let's have a motion to open this item to the public at seven seventeen.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly, seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Folks, you guys want to come up? Anybody want to come up? Please state your name and address for the record for us.
My name is Nancy Turnbull. I live seventeen, seven eighty-two Cottonwood. Cottonwood is the road in Maple Villas. We live along the border where they just cut down trees, many, many, many trees and bushes.
Ma'am, could you speak closer to the mic for me, please?
Sure. They cut down trees and bushes and everything in that lot behind us. We can now see the front door of the, of the hospital and all of the traffic that goes by on Twenty-Three. I guess our question is, what is the flex use that you speak of? And what can that be used for? That'll be right behind our property. And we're interested in, as are my neighbors, what will be there? It's like, nobody really knows what, what's going to go there. And we're curious what's going to be built there and how they're going to protect our property from seeing all the way to Detroit just about. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
You might mention that while I was listening.
Good evening. I am the parcel owner of...
I need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary McKeon, one seven, 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 five, Twenty-Three Mile Road, also one seven, seven, nine, five, Twenty-Three Mile Road. And we're planning to live there for a while, so... for a while, so nothing's being planned on our parcel. I think the parcel she was talking about, that the trees came out, wasn't ours. It would be the parcel to the east of that. And I do have a letter from my neighbor to the west in favor of this zoning, and I do, too. So I don't know if you guys want to see a copy of the email he sent me.
Give that to Mr. Reloya right there.
Okay. Can I ask a question? What was that letter regarding?
It's the letter, the property owner to the west of me, also approving, that he's approving, not approving, but he agrees to, he has no, you know, complaints about the property being zoned as flex. He's in favor for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a brief question as well, just for clarification. Ma'am, so there's, this, it's on this screen right here. We've got three parcels. Are you one of the smaller two?
She is the the larger parcel.
You're the larger parcel.
And and the middle parcel. And the letter she's brought is from the third parcel. So essentially, what she's saying, if I'm correct, is that all three landowners are in support of this.
Okay. And and just to verify what you were saying, that the trees that have been cleared are probably on the parcel to your west, which I believe the Taco Bell is going in there.
To the east.
No, to the east.
To the east.
We were in there all summer, taking down the trees in there.
Very good, understand. All right.
Looks a lot different.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? No? Okay. Then we need a motion to close the public hearing at seven twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion's closed, or the public portion is closed. Mr. Box, did you want to address?
Sure. So a- as I mentioned, the Ms. McKeon is the is the landowner of two of those pieces, and it sounds like she has a letter from the owner of the third that they are in support. The the first speaker, Ms. Turnbell, I think she's speaking about the the piece to the east. There is nothing planned there, to answer her question. There there's no development that's come to the township and and made any applications at this time. We we do not have a tree ordinance, so they have the right to cut those trees down, but there's nothing, there's nothing planned for that property at this time. And to answer her other question, what is flex zoning? Previously, the master plan had this area all master planned to someday be industrial property. Flex zoning would allow them to still do industrial if the landowner so chose to, but also gives them some flexibility, hence the name flex zoning, to do commercial or residential, whatever makes sense at the time. And largely, this was due to the fact that there's so many peaks and valleys of the market, and at different times, certain properties are more desirable for one use over another, so it gives them some flexibility. But as you well know, we built in a bunch of safeguards to protect the surrounding neighbors, so it's not like there's going to be some large building, you know, right up to your property line. That that that's not going to happen. But if you wanted to speak with us afterwards, I I can show you the exact language for flex zoning.
In other words, we don't know yet, to be honest. And nobody's come before you and said, we're interested?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay. Is there a motion for rezoning from residential one-family suburban R one S to flex? Are those parcels? Anyone?
Well, Mr. Chairman, based on the comments from our planner and from our residents who spoke, I will go ahead and make a motion to recommend rezoning from residential one-family suburban R one S to flex use, the flex zone for parcel numbers zero eight, seventeen, four fifty-one, zero eighteen, zero eight, seventeen, four fifty-one, zero twenty-four, and zero eight, seventeen, four fifty-one, zero two five.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spatafora to recommend.
And I'll support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes. Okay. Next item. Thank you, guys, very much. Rezoning from residential one-family R one S to residential one-family urban R one, permanent parcel zero eight, two eight, one zero one, zero zero five, zero eight, two eight, one five one, zero zero five, zero eight, two eight, one five one, zero zero six, located on the east side of Romeo Plank, south of Twenty-Two Mile Road, section twenty-five, Compton Township petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, my only comment would be I appreciate Josh mentioning the the frontage. That was gonna be my question, why we were looking at R one and not not higher density. So thanks for answering it at a time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bentley, anything?
No, I I have nothing.
Okay. Well, then I guess we can open it to the public and close it because there's no one in the audience, just to note that. But we do have Compton Township residents here, so.
What do you mean, nobody?
We have to legally.
We have somebody in the audience.
Ah, she's working. Oh, yeah. So we'll open it to the public at seven twenty-six with a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly, supported by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone want to speak? All right. And then seven twenty-seven. Oh, perfect. We'll close the public portion with a motion. Motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of rezoning permanent parcels zero eight, two eight, one zero one, zero zero five, zero eight, two eight, one five one, zero zero five, and zero eight, two eight, one five one, zero zero six, from R one S to R one. This would be pursuant to the recommendations and all the sole the fact that R one S is no longer supported by our master plan.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield? I'll second it. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
And Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Next item, public comments on non-agenda items. Since I'll note that there's no one in the audience, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Anyone?
Merry Christmas to all.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I just mentioned that it's our last meeting of the year. It's been good to work with everybody this year.
Yes.
We've had some, we've had some interesting meetings, probably some more interesting meetings than we've had in a while. And I think it's been a good year, though, overall, and glad to glad to work with everyone.
Mm-hmm. And I'd like to compliment Mr. Bentley, who is been reappointed for the next three years by the Board of Trustees. So good job. And it's been good working with all of you as well, so. And a lot of that stems from the big guy in the light blue shirt over there, Mr. Box, runs the show. So we appreciate you, too, Mr. Box and your staff.
Thank you.
All right. Compton Township Board of Trustees, latest on update. Mr. Oliver is not here.
Man, I had a question for him.
Yeah. We'll move on to the ZBA. Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, nothing, nothing to report on agenda-wise. Did, I should ask, do we have anyone reappointed on ZBA at the same time? Do we have somebody up?
I don't believe anybody expired this year on ZBA, but we did have a member resign from the ZBA. So if you if you know somebody who's interested, let us know.
Yeah, we had, I don't know, should I mention who it is? I I I think I will, just because I think it's effective January first, and we're not gonna have another meeting.
Correct.
So Dawn Slosson, who's been a longtime member of the ZBA, is is retiring. She's been on the ZBA for a long time.
Almost twenty years.
Almost twenty years. I think she was, if not the longest-serving board member between the three boards at the moment, she was the second-longest. And she's been there, she's been there a long time and does a good job. She's a quiet board member, but she comes to pretty much every meeting. The last couple of years, she's had a little more difficulty making them, but asks good questions, and she's been there a while. So we'll we'll miss her, but we wish her luck going forward. I think that'd be all I have.
All right. Planning Department items. Mr. Box?
Just one item. Wish you all a happy holiday, and and I'll give you your first holiday gift. There's no meeting on January third. We have no agenda items.
Oh.
So you you have the night off.
All right. Well, thank you for that. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield.
Figure I'd take over for Mr. Spatafora.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. That's a that's a no. Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy holidays, and we'll see you back in January. Thank you, everyone.